Is it 20 feet there?
I mean, the gazebo itself needs to be offset from the path by a little ways, but the actual shared-use path is 20 feet wide there.
Okay, so we're, now we're talking about going from 20 to 30.
No, we're not going to 30. The 30, the 30 was an original recommendation.
Twenty-five.
Okay, so it's going to be 20.
That was reduced several years ago.
Right, to the 20.
Right.
So it's going to be from the, from the Punta Gorda Hotel, it's going to start at 20 feet, go all the way, where it splits after the Bayfront Center, how you have one going toward the water and then one going straight, what's going to happen there?
That, that section downsizes, at minimum, the current plan shows 12 feet, and that has to do with some extensive discussions we had with the boat club people and the parking arrangement, so there is a portion down there that on the current plan is 12 feet, but the bulk of it at that point is 15 feet.
Okay, so it's going to go 20 feet, 12.
Yeah, I mean, it'll, it'll, it'll be consistent at 20 until you get to about where the Bayfront Center is currently, be downsized to 18, then to 15, and then, other than that one little place that needs to be 12, it would be 15 there, all the way to the end of Reta.
Yes, Rachel, I'm sorry.
Are you going to have two sidewalks like there is now, there's one that goes straight and there's one that curves around, is that, are you taking out, and why I'm asking that question is if we're going to put parking there, I would hate to see parking next to a sidewalk.
You're referring to, I guess, what's now, I think, three Pittman and Alice Parks down there?
Yeah.
You know, we've, we've talked about that in concept and, and we're going to have to basically redo that as a result of putting parking, but we will need, we will need a sidewalk in front of the parking because we need to bring the people somewhere, so you'll have diagonal parking, you'll have a sidewalk that will be there, at that point, it, it doesn't seem logical or the space would restrict us from having two separate sidewalks like you have now, so more than likely what you'll wind up there is the parking, followed by a, you know, 15 or so foot harbor walk, we would try to do some separation with landscaping, but like I say, we need to get people from, from the parking onto the harbor walk without, you know, having to walk through a big grass area.
Rachel?
My concern is with now the 25, what are we losing on the park side, and I would totally disagree with 30 because what's left of the park, I mean, if you put a 30-foot path through there, you're going to lose most of the open green space, so, I mean, the 25 I'm okay with, because I feel like with Carolyn, if we go back to 15 and make it 20, which was the, but it was all going to be concrete at that point, it was, it was large, because when we went out there and we measured, it came all the way past where the existing big shade structure, what do we call it?
Pavilion.
Pavilion is now, came all the way into that turnaround, so all of that was going to be concrete, so I like the grass idea, and I do think that people will use it, because if, if there is a bunch of bikers or whatever, at least the pedestrians can kind of go off into the grass or something like that, I think it is still usable space, that's why I like option one. Option two is creative, but not my favorite, and I, I, 15, I just feel like if we go down to 15, we can't ever really, I mean, we could, changes how many times, but, you know, we can't ever go back and, and widen it, and it, it is busy, and so for that reason, I think I'm okay with the 25, as long as we're not losing too much of the park.
Well, let me, let me just, if you don't mind, the, the previous option had a five-foot wide seawall cap and a 20-foot harbor walk to make 25 feet, option one has a two-foot wide seawall cap, five feet of grass, and 20 feet of harbor walk to make 27 feet, so option number one, in opposed to the previous design that you've seen, the most recent one that you've all seen, encroaches into the park by a total of two feet, so, you know, in theory-
Two foot more than before?
Than, than, yes, than what is currently on paper that you've, that you've viewed. So if you reduce the harbor walk from 20 feet to 18 feet, there would be no further encroachment, in, in theory.
What are you going to do at the gazebo and the ponds fountain? Is it going to all just work out somehow, or are you going to have to narrow?
At, at the gazebo, with, with this option, there'll be no conflict with the steps, the steps are far enough away, in fact, they, they married up right on when we had the five-foot wide cap and the harbor walk was five feet away, so now with seven feet, there'll actually be a little bit of space in between, so there'll be no problem. At the, at the pond statue, again, on the current plan, we actually, we hit it almost perfect with the, there's a, a path that goes up and it has some hand railing on the backside, we hit it almost perfect there, so we'll have to either make an adjustment to either the, the path leading up to the fountain, or do something with the harbor walk so that we don't have to make that adjustment, but there's, you know, none of these options would result in a, you know, a problem with the fountain itself, it's just that access on the north side that we have to plan around.
Tom?
I, I don't think that we, well, I was comfortable with the 15 feet, because I really think no matter how wide we make it, it's really not going to be enough, people are just going to expand the walkway to meet the available space, but, you know, I could live with the 20 feet and a five-feet-wide section of grass, because it's only protruding an additional two feet, as you said, into the, into the park, so I could live with that. I think we, I think we have to drop back and talk about the, the seawall as a standalone issue and make a decision on that, and then I'd like to come back and spend a little more time on the, the walkway again, just a question that I have, and I just want to throw it out there for you guys to think about, is the grass that we have there, it's, it's going to be grass that we have to maintain, we may get fire ants there and that's going to have to be treated, I just wanted to throw out the possibility of putting artificial turf there, and I know that there are issues with artificial turf that would have to be dealt with, maybe drainage issues, there may be leaching issues, but I just wanted to kick, throw it out there for you guys to consider if now is the appropriate time.
Since I have it in my yard, I guess I could speak to it, since I had to fight City Hall to keep it in my yard, it, it's hard to maintain, it really is, you wouldn't think so, but the more seams that you have, like the little pieces that we have over at the linear park, the more seams you have, the uglier it gets, the harder it is to keep nice, the harder it is to keep down, you would probably need curbing somewhere to kind of tie it in, I, it's hot, this stuff gets blazing hot in the summer, too hot for a dog to walk on, I mean, it gets really, really hot, I think there's better products than what we bought eight years ago that don't get as hot, but they get very hot.
Okay.
But I was hoping we could do some Bermuda, Bermuda grass, that looks like a putting green, how about that?
For the record, Joan LeBeau, Urban Design, there are options of different types of grass we can use that would be less maintenance on them, you know, we could go with something a little higher and it would be like a Spartina or something, so we are looking into other options due to that maintenance issue.
That's fine.
Thank you.
And I'm fine with the year with the five feet and the 20-foot.
Okay, I have been convinced.
Thank you. Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the first design option for Harbor Walk West Seawall. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I, I still have some questions on the seawall.
Seawall?
Yeah, I want to, I want to, I talked to you about the cost of it.
I'm sorry, Tom, we already, okay, go ahead.
The projected cost.
The projected cost of the, the seawall.
Just the seawall.
Just the seawall without any other.
We will be going out for bid just on the seawall.
That's it.
As I understand it.
That's it.
Okay.
For just the seawall, nothing else, no restoration, no mobilization, no nothing, the brick and mortar for the seawall on option one is 1.4 million plus, it's 1.414.
If I recall, it's more than what we had budgeted for the five-foot wide seawall, is that not correct? Didn't we have, we had a million one, we had a range of a million one to a million five for the five-foot wide seawall, how did we get a two-foot for more money than a five-foot?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't recall specifically the number, but the previous number per linear foot cost for the five-foot wide wall was 1,250, the current number that we're using is 1,150, so there is some cost savings, and these numbers that we're looking at are only the Phase II seawall, so they're not inside the phase that you're getting the grant, it's 1,251 feet, so we're, you know, we've reduced the cost of the seawall based on, you know, the reduced material, concrete and rebar.
The 1.1 million was our budget number, it was, he, Wyler Engineering had on there, I think it was like 1.5 million at one time as an estimated cost.
Yeah.
We haven't bid anything out.
Okay, so how many bids can we anticipate getting for this project? Does it, we have any idea how many?
When you say the project, are you speaking of just the seawall?
Only the seawall.
Seawall.
Only the seawall.
I, I mean, I, it's hard to guess, we've done a lot of marina contracts and we're seeing, you know, things like boat ramps, seawalls and docks on public bids, we're seeing between three and four bids, and most recently, within the last year, did a, about a $300,000 seawall and dock project, or, I'm sorry, boat ramp and dock project, and we received, I believe, three or four bids, and that's pretty consistent for what we're seeing, just, you know, people that are regionally located that can do it at an affordable price, that specialize in the marina work, I would, that's, you know, my guess, we may see less, we may see more, but-
So my, my concern is, is that we only get one bid and it's a few, few dollars below the budget, is that what we're going to go with?
I think it will be up to us to make that decision, we only have one bid.
I mean, I don't, we can only do what we can do.
Yeah, I understand.
I don't know what else.
Rachel?
I've been told by somebody in the industry that there is not just a cost savings with material, but there should be a cost savings with the forming and the labor involved in reducing the width of a seawall, not just concrete and rebar, because they have to form the whole entire five feet, and now they only have to form two feet, so there should be some labor cost savings.
And we'll find that out when we bid it, I mean, the only way we can do it is go out there with competitive bids.
But I see what Tom's saying, they already know our number, so they're going to be very close, they're going to be very close to the, the number that we've put out there, but-
In the public environment?
It's the way it goes, yeah.
Yeah, in the public environment, we have to put a number out there.
We have Marion.
Yes, we do.
I hope she's listening.
We don't have to accept any bid, the only reason we're going through this exercise right now is to see what we can get done ahead of time before the federal grant kicks in.
And we had to have a budget number, and that's always high, I mean, you all, you know, you want to be conservative.
I, I would just like us to consider different options, if, if we can, and if they make some sense, I think, I, I understand, typically, we just put it out on a computer and, and let interested contractors, if they're interested, you know, they notify us that they'd like to bid on it, if we can maybe possibly think outside the box, or maybe notify contractors in, in the business and see if we can generate interest in a different fashion than doing it just in the way that we've been doing it in the past, because, you know, there have been occasions, we've only gotten one or two bids.
And I believe we already have a list, I don't know if the seawall people are on the lists, but we have the lists of acceptable contractors, so they would be also contacted, I assume, would that be correct?
Oh, yeah.
They're noticed when, yeah, when packages are released, they get to view it and then-
Do we, I believe it's all done through the e-procurement system.
Yes. All right, are, are we okay then? We have already made a motion, we voted, we are moving forward, okay.
Do we vote?
Yes, we do.
Yes, we already did vote, yes.
Okay, so we, we now can move forward with finalizing the design bid package for the seawall between the gazebo and the bayfront.
Mm-hmm, correct.
Question?
Yes.
Any additional costs associated with the engineering for the, for the, any redesigns here?
Yes, there is a, a fee that we've submitted previously, it's roughly $6,000.
And for, and what is that fee for?
Well, that fee would be for doing the design of, the redesign of the seawall and putting together bid plans, specs, and estimate for, you know, a bidding package for that set, and coordinating with the agencies.
Redesign of the seawall is specifically because of the, the, the handrail issue, I mean, if we had gone with the five-foot wide seawall, I frankly don't believe that FDOT would have approved a five-foot wide seawall without a handrail, I really don't believe that would, that would have happened, and I don't, I don't believe there's any documents that exist, correct me if I'm wrong, but any documents that existed that approval was, was imminent or was there, so I'm questioning the, the design, the additional charge to redesign this.
I understand, and, and, you know, you're right that the DOT will not accept the five-foot wide seawall cap without the handrail, previously, though, the city did submit our 60 percent plans, they called them, to the DOT to do an extensive review, the DOT did not comment in any way that the seawall was unacceptable, they reviewed the seawall, they made numerous comments pertaining to the embedment depth of the seawall panels, the thickness of the seawall panels, calculations which we have, you know, resolved, but nothing in, in any shape or form which indicated that the size of the cap was unacceptable or that a handrail would be required, so, you know, based on that information, we had to move forward with that design at the time.
Okay.
Again, they didn't say they needed it at 60 percent, that's when they make their decisions.
Okay.
I just got a little hot burn with the charge for the redesign, okay.
Understood. All right.
Now-
Yes.
We're moving forward with that.
Yes.
I'm hearing a lot of comments from council members that, just listening to this, that you want to revisit the design.
I don't, I do not wish to revisit the design.
Of the phase that we're, that we're getting the-
No, 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 not the seawall, do you want to revisit the design of the park?
I ask my questions, I'm good.
I'm comfortable with the, the design of the, the phase that we're, that we're getting grant funding for, I have no problem with that, the remaining phases, I would like to have the opportunity to take a second look at.
I'd just like to see them.
Yeah, we, what, I think we asked for that already, we asked previously.
So we can still proceed with at least, because they, Wyler Engineering has to complete-
We've agreed, we agreed.
For the federal funding area.
Agreed, and we have agreed now to move forward on the seawall, I think what you heard today, we like this idea with the grass and the 20-foot sidewalk.
Okay.
All right, so we, I think we're okay there, but I agree with Tom that we did ask to see the plans again, since most of us were not on council at that time.
That's right.
So that's why we asked to see the remaining part of the design.
And we're not even there yet.
That's right.
Right, let's, they need to finish the federal grant area, and they need to get this bid out on the street, so let's just let them concentrate on that, then we'll come back.
I, I just have one more question, if I could, I don't mean to prolong this, but the, the seating that's going to be on, on the landward side of this, of the 20-foot walk, that's only going to occur around the gazebo area, it's not going to be parallel with the entire seawall, is that correct?
In the current plan, it's not, in a prior plan, before we had the higher seawall cap, we did have it going the long way, but that's something I think we certainly need to visit, now, I think for the zone that's being designed right now, we have it under that big, you know, semi-circular compass rose area in front of the gazebo, and we have it around the pavilion area, so we have it in, in a good amount of the places in what is, you know, the current Zone 7, when we move forward with the actual park design in Phase II, I think we certainly need to revisit whether we want to do seawalls, whether we want to do bench pads, you know, how we want to address, you know, seating other than, you know, the fact that you could walk across the grass and sit on that seawall.
And, and that's fine, and the, the reason I'm raising it is because my concern was if there were a continuous seating, how, totally parallel with the seawall, and you're on a bike, and there are a couple of bikes, and you're running, come up against a baby carriage or some old people walking with walkers, you need to be, be able to get off that walkway pretty quick, and that-
Agreed.
That, that grass gives you the opportunity to, to do that and avoid a collision, if that, if that's seating wall were totally parallel, I would be concerned about.
Well, and I don't think that would really look very good either, I think some nice benches or whatever along there would be much preferable.
Yeah, we have, based on today's discussion, we have absolutely zero desire, no matter how creative urban design thinks they are, to put in a continuous seating wall, unless council, three council members change their opinion, you will not see that.
Thank you, I think we can move on at this point.
Thank you.
Agreed?
Yes.
Okay, we're coming on 20 after 10, let's see if we can get through this next one, and we have our Charlotte County's revisions to mineral resource extraction future land use designation, and our attorney has drafted letters for the reviewing agencies, I must say, I believe that they were excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I do want to indicate that in your agenda packet, there were intended to be
two, of, two different types of the forms, letters that I was going to send out, one that would be going to the reviewing agencies and the other which goes directly to Charlotte County, so-
We have them.
I, I understand, and it, just for the, there was a comment, in addition to the Department of Economic Opportunity, my recommendation to the city council was to send the letter to Department of Environmental Protection, SWIFTMUD, the Regional Planning Council, and the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission.
Okay, any comments about, yes, Rachel?
In my discussions with Howard, and I want to throw this out there for council's consideration, we have this buffer zone that we know about now and, and the, we thought protections that go along with that, my thought is, would the city council, the city be interested in trying to contract with some independent body, what would we call them, contractors?
To do what, Rachel?
To monitor the water in the buffer zone, or monitor the buffer zone, or, or go out to find out what could be done, like it's, a, an extra set of eyes, because SWIFTMUD is supposed to be monitoring it, but of course, we always find, find out way after the fact when there have been issues, so I was thinking maybe the city could be a little bit more proactive and try to find, and it, I don't even know how often they would do it, it would be totally up to us to try to explore it, but some kind of monitoring of this protected area for our benefit, obviously, we would have to ask the county for permission because it's in their jurisdiction, but I think now is the time if we wanted to move forward with that, and, and I guess their, SWIFTMUD does use some independent contractors in other areas, Howard, we found out.
Mm-hmm. They do.
Tom Jackson, Utilities Director, for the record, yes, and I just found out about this not long ago, so this is a very timely discussion, as part of the agency cutbacks, the Water Management Districts had, have had to lean their budgets, and the St. John's Water Management District no longer conducts mining inspections, that's contracted out to a, I believe, an engineering firm, but I'm getting more details on that, so it, it, it's not something that isn't being done, it's just, in my mind, that's a legal question of who has jurisdiction to do that, who's allowed to do that, and, and, you know, what do we do, just give a report to the county or to the Water Management District, I'm still kind of unclear on, on, on the moving parts of it, but I, I like the concept.
Would there be an opportunity to work with SWIFTMUD and to request them to, you know, to report back to us about their monitoring, because if they're supposed to be monitoring what the mines are doing, perhaps what we should be doing is receiving reports from them to make sure, and that would be, then, why should we be paying for something that they, they are responsible for? That would be my perspective.
Yeah, my concern is, and we're still, we're still gathering information from the Water Management District through Tara Polta and our, our government liaison, and Tara's awesome, she's just, you know, it takes a while to get through the, the divisions and through the agencies, my, my concern is that they're, they're not doing a routine compliance inspection of mines, they're being driven by complaints, they're only looking at them when there's a, there's a complaint or an issue, because a lot of agencies have gone to their, gone to that for the inspection, I know my colleagues that are still at DEP, when I was at DEP, I, part of my job description was I had to look at 300 facilities a year, now it's look at as many as you can get to, and we'll let some of the ones that have a good compliance history slide, so that's just the state of the state, if you will, in regulations these days.
Yes, Rachel?
And I'm not even sure it's just concentrated on, on mining, it could be just the water itself, the water quality, if there are any issues, I mean, they could maybe do it quarterly or not even monthly, I don't know, just some kind of monitoring that the city could enact to be proactive.
Tom, does, does our utilities staff do any of that monitoring of the water in other areas?
Yes, we have, we have passed in 1964 as a, a law of the land, it's not a statute, and I'm not an attorney, so I'm, I'm gonna, I'm wading into very sketchy understanding of this, but there are two types of laws, there are statutes, and then there's a law that pertains to a specific jurisdictional area that's not statewide, yes.
Special act.
Special act, that the legislature did in 1964, giving the city of Punta Gorda the right to regulate septic tanks in our watershed, even in Charlotte County, and to this day, we have a program where we inspect septic tank placement and construction and CO septic tanks, and we charge a fee for that, what happens is Charlotte County Health Department, anything in our designated watershed area, if there's an application for septic tank, we get that application, we have people trained from the water plant that go out and inspect the site, make sure they take tape measures, make sure they have the proper setback from waters that contribute to Shell or Prairie Creek, and then we sign off on it, so we are doing some of those sort of inspection activities, but that state, the legislature gave us the authority to do that in Charlotte County, see, we don't have anything like that for mining, this is specific to septic tanks, and I can send you that rule or that law, you may have seen it before, but I'll, I can send it to you again so you can understand it better.
Okay, first Kim and then Tom.
I'm, you brought what I was going to ask you, I don't think it's just the mining, I think it's these agricultural ponds that are being built also that are, you know, causing problems, and no one's really looking at them at all, they're not being regulated at all, at least the mines have people coming out once in a while to inspect for one thing or another, but some of these others do not, so we just, if you have a problem, that's when we find out that there's something-
Right.
-wrong, so.
I, I like the idea about inspecting, but I had asked a couple of, of questions previously, what criteria, if any exist, does SWIFTMUD, SWIFTMUD allow a permit for a mine, I, I don't have an answer to that, what is the criteria?
We're still waiting on Tara to get with her mining group and get that information.
We won't know if we even agree to set somebody up to inspect, what we might be inspecting for, and the same question I would ask, not only with regard to the mines, but with regard to the agricultural, the irrigation, says, what, what is their criteria, we don't know that, so we, I think we need to know that.
Well, yes, and they have that, the Water Management District, they have criteria based on permit requirements, what they look at and what they look for, and we're still getting those from the Water Management District.
So before we make a, my decision on that, we should have that criteria, David should look at it, Tom should look at it, and the other question I had that I asked was the, I know that the, the State Department of Environmental Protection has what they call sole source criteria, sole source criteria, sole source criteria for a single-source aquifer, and I had asked the question, is our watershed considered, or could it be considered a single-source aquifer, since there are special considerations that DEP has for that, I don't have any, did you have it?
I don't have an answer for that yet, no.
So that's still, you're looking into that.
And that's an EP, that's a federal, that's how the Safe Drinking Water Act, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so that's federal, so there may not be, it may not be, it may apply only to aquifers, it may be part of the, of the underground injection control, which is a federal program.
That could ultimately affect us, though, down the road as we go into the RO plant, could it not?
Well, there, there are aquifers that are designated as drinking water aquifers, and those are highly protected, both at the federal and the state level, we already have permits for some activities that we do in those.
Okay.
Yep.
I would like for us to have that information.
That would be helpful.
I agree.
Very helpful, thank you. How are we now on the letters, are we ready to, did you have something to add?
Before we get to that, I was just going to throw something out that was prompted by a comment that Tom just made, it's obviously way too late for this legislative session, but maybe something to be working towards in the future is that, you know, however successful we might be regarding the comprehensive plan that, that county is dealing with, we still are more or less on the outside looking in with respect to the protection of the watershed that, that we need to protect because it's outside of our jurisdictional boundaries, even something like taking samples, unless you were going to be going by boat and taking water samples in boat, we have, we have trespassing issues. It would not be inconceivable for the legislature to adopt a special act that gave us some form of regulatory oversight or jurisdiction with respect to that watershed, and now that we have a lobbyist, then maybe it's something that we can work together with for something in the next year, the year following, or what have you, so that we do have the authority similar to what was done in the 60s regarding the septic tanks enforcement capability or monitoring capability, what, whatever the legislature would give us regarding that, that watershed.
That's a good idea.
That would be, that would be the best approach, because then it's entirely in our hands, the inspection, the enforcement, all of it.
That would be, that's an excellent suggestion.
And we, at, at the last council meeting when we were discussing this, I indicated among the things that, that we should be getting are copies of the current permits that SWIFTMUD has issued for these mines, unfortunately, we weren't able to obtain those prior to the time I wrote this letter, but going forward, those are critical to be able to understand exactly, you know, what is the operating constraints on those mines, if any, and how, how do we need to address them? address them if there's any huge deficiencies.
Okay, so there's several items that staff will follow up on then?
Yes.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we still have the issue in front of us. How are we, are we going to move forward with these letters?
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the letters to be sent to each of those agencies, along with the Charlotte County Commission? Been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
What about the agencies that I've mentioned previously?
Those are the ones that, David had those listed.
Okay.
Okay. All right, we good?
Yes.
All right. Amazing, we have no new business? How did that happen? Okay, we have recommendations from city officers, our city manager.
Nothing.
Nothing.
Since we have a couple of minutes, I want to take this opportunity to blow my own horn a little bit, which is something I rarely, rarely do, but none of the members of the current city council were on the council at the time that I was retained to be the city's attorney. So you may not be totally aware of my background and experience. I am principally an environmental attorney with extensive local government background and experience. And, and so there's a lot of this stuff that I can do for you guys, that most jurisdictions will have to retain me just to be a consultant for them. And I just wanted to also point out, because we had the opportunity to discuss it today, that as a, as a member of a fairly large law firm that has all kinds of disciplines represented, the city has the opportunity for me to tap into that from time to time. And as I expressed earlier, my hourly, hourly rate, although it's not as high as the one that, that we talked, is, is pretty close. And, and so you get a lot of expertise from my firm at $165 an hour, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I also have two new experienced attorneys, they're new to the firm, that are going to be spending a lot more time in our Punta Gorda office, and I'm getting them more involved in things that they're handing us, they're helping me handle some litigation that we have, or potential litigation we have on a contract dispute. And, and I also have, you know, a lot of access, and I've done that throughout the years, is consult with attorneys in my firm that you guys get to benefit from. So I just wanted to take that opportunity to let you know who you have as a city attorney, and what kind of firm you have that's actually got your back.
Well, and we appreciate it, and appreciate, again, your recommendations, and I think probably any time that you perceive a need that we don't see, please do not hesitate to bring it up.
I will, thank you.
I mean, I think that's what we asked our lobbyist as well, if there is an issue, you know, we want to, we want to know about it, but thank you.
And oh, by the way, I'm not complaining about the fee, I love being a city attorney.
Well, we love having you. Especially as your writing has become much more concise.
Yeah, is there something else, or not?
Okay, good. All right, city clerk?
Yes, under boards and committees, we have still a continuing vacancy for two alternate members on the Historic Preservation Advisory Board. But that's the only vacancy we have, so that's good news.
That is good news.
And then, under nominations, we have an unexpired term on the Punta Gorda Housing Authority, but we do have three applicants who are eligible for nomination.
Nominate all?
Right. Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Under policy and legislation, I was going to bring information back from our MPO, but I will hold it for next time.
Okay.
City council members' comments? Oh, there is one other thing. I, I said I would share this with everyone. There's a couple that met last night at the chamber event, and they are making by hand quilts for little teddy bears, and they give out a hundred a year, a hundred a month to the children at our Children's Hospital in Fort Myers. And so they obviously could use some support for the material that they're doing, but I thought that, and they're so cute, and again, for any child that needs to have support. So I said I would mention that. Other comments? Nancy?
Yes, thank you. I have an item I'd like to put on the future council agenda. We have an issue that has evolved over time in Burnstall Isles, where FDOT, in their redesign of the intersection of Madrid, Anio's 41, and now, in their widening of, of Burnstall Road, has eliminated all direct access from the shopping center to northbound 41. So the only way you can get to northbound 41 is to go out, and I'll, I'll show you maps at the, at the future council meeting, is to go out and, and make U-turns. If, if you're a semi, the only way you can leave the, the shopping center, if you want to go northbound on 41, is to go south on Burnstall Road, go to Ackland Road, and then go north on 41. As a result, what's happened is Tripoli Boulevard between Madrid and Monaco has been turned into an alternate access. And no matter how much PGPD tries to work with all the shop owners, they get rebuffed from shop owners, there's a high turnover with the drivers, so they don't, there's no memory retention there, that they're not supposed to be using Tripoli. I've seen public semis going down Tripoli, I know other people who have seen it, and...
That is a local road, is that correct?
It is a residential road.
Well, then there's something that we could probably do.
We have an ordinance that restricts the number of, I believe it's wheels on the trucks to six, doesn't stop anybody. And, and PGFD, PGPD, you know, I'm talking with Tom Lewis, said, you know, we put people out there, but we can't monitor that road, and people speed, we get complaints from the residents. It's a problem. And the only solution is to really, and I have the support of Kite Realty, who owns the shopping center, they're behind, they, they support me on this, their traffic people in Indianapolis support this, the Burnstall Isles Association Board of Directors supports this, two of the...
What do they support, Nancy?
In, in exploring a solution. And I've been working with Mark Gering on what could be a possible solution. It's an issue that I believe it's the unintended consequence of FDOT regulations, that they, they follow the regulations, and they redesign the intersections along US 41. They, I don't, I'll give them the benefit of the doubt, I do not believe that they've really realized what they've done in turning in this residential street into an alternate access. So I want to bring this back to us with some maps to show, because then, for a council discussion, so that then you could take it to the MPO.
Take it to the MPO.
I'm glad that Mr. Harrington is here today, because it is, it's an issue, and, and it's not acceptable for FDOT to say, well, we have our regulations with the, that whole intersection.
Well, I guess I was also, since it's a local road, also, we should be able to do something in terms of either speed bumps or stanchions, so it allows only a car to go through, something.
Well, you get into problems, because, you know, here's the issue, you get into problems with local deliveries, there are semis that come in there that might be a local delivery.
That's true, too.
You know, there are all kinds of issues. You can say, let's put a speed bump, let's put in some stanchions. Well, then, you know what people are going to do? They're going to go down and use Bordeaux. They're going to go down and use Monaco, go down to Monaco and come up for, I mean, people are going to seek and go around.
So what you need is a cut through to go on 41?
We'd like, I'd like for, we'd like for FDOT to go back and revisit what you have done, and ultimately, probably go back and put something in where Madrid can turn on to 41 northbound, somehow.
May even a light.
Well, it's very close to Jones Loop Road and Burnstall Road, that's the issue. But I have the map off the GIS website that shows in 1999 where you used to be able to go out and turn left and go north. So we want to bring...
There's a median there.
There is a median, a big median.
Okay, so they just have to have a cut through.
I'll show you maps. I'll show you maps. I just want to, I, I talked to Howard about it, I talked to him a long time ago about it, and I said, give me some time to, to have discussions with all of the interested parties, to get everybody on board, so that everybody...
So are you going to hold meetings before you bring it back to council?
Already done that.
Oh, you've already done, so you're, you're ready to present?
I am.
Okay, let's, let's, why don't we do that for...
On a future agenda.
Future agenda.
Yeah, I've already, I've already met with the Burnstall Isles Association, I've already talked with Kite Realty, I've already had conversation with Tom Lewis, the condo associations along Tripoli, everyone's on board that something needs to be done.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Kim?
All I have to remind everyone about the Wine and Jazz Festival this weekend, so hopefully the weather will be a little bit warmer, and it'll be a nice day. And I did have the opportunity to fill in for Carolyn and go down to Benita Springs and do the Comcast Newsmakers. And what I talked about is what a wonderful community we have of volunteers, and the volunteerism, and how important our volunteers are in our community.
And that will be on?
That will be on Comcast Newsmakers. They're supposed to send us a DVD or something.
Oh, you'll keep it posted?
I'll keep you posted.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yes, thank you, and thank you for doing that, appreciate it. Of course, they call two days before and say, well, this is the only time you can do it, and, you know, come down to Benita Springs, you know, so it's difficult to change things. Tom?
Yes, please. I'd just like to say, our decision today in awarding a contract to construct an RO plant will ensure that our citizens and water customers will have a source of clean, reliable source of drinking water into the future. In addition, the measures we have taken to ensure that the surface water within our watershed remains protected under the original provisions of the county's comprehensive plan could not have been more appropriate, and I, again, compliment our attorney for doing what I think is a wonderful, wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel?
None.
Okay, we have opportunity now for citizens' comments on anything.
Did Howard not have anything to say?
He didn't have anything to say.
Good morning, Jean Murtha. A few comments. First of all, Nancy's absolutely right on about the traffic on Tripoli, and it's, something's got to be done, because I would not want to live in that street, and it really has changed since that whole intersection was, was changed. So, and she's correct, she's got the entire support of our community, that we really got to do something, it's an accident waiting to happen for the people to live along there. One thing, maybe a thought, I've seen public tractor trailers coming out of Burnstall Isles and going right down there, so perhaps dealing directly with publics as to how to figure out how to deal, deal with it differently, maybe going, maybe going out through Burnstall Road or something, but it's going to be difficult, but it's got to be changed. The other thing is that on the promenade, the, I was just counting the ceiling tiles here, figuring they're 24 inches, and I think they are, but if you go from the sea wall to the total promenade as proposed, I think it takes you from this wall to that post. So that's a pretty big incursion into the grass, so it would be maybe nice to be able to see how the whole park might look, if you have something that wide and that massive going down the entire length of the park, maybe you already have it, but I'd certainly like to see it. And it was great awarding that contract, because I'm a big proponent of the RO plant, but the financing of that project, I think, still is a concern, unless something's been recently settled, but we seem to be on the treadmill between the county and SWIFTMUD and ourselves, so I don't know where we are with the total, total financing of it, but it's, it's a big number, I think, that we don't have covered yet, so. And I'm not sure the citizenry really knows exactly where we stand. One of the proposals I made at the utility advisory board was perhaps we have a workshop between city council and utility advisory board, and maybe a few others, to be able to more solidify some of the strength we have, because we got to come up with some financing for that thing.
I think that's about it.
Pardon me?
I think that's about it in terms of time.
Oh, sorry, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, we, Kim?
Jay Buckley, Punta Gorda Butters Alliance, I'll be very brief. We had a meeting yesterday, I also am on the advisory board of Team Punta Gorda's Maritime Committee, and I just want to remind you folks about the Waterfront Activity Center, and I think we have to keep this in the back of our minds, its location, what's, what's going to be involved in its building, and there, we will be putting together an effort to speed up the process. I think the design is four years out, we'd like to figure out a way that that can be moved up, but I, I don't know that what you decided today is going to interfere in any way, I just think before you put stuff in, that has to be eventually torn out, you know, you want to maybe consider that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I think we want to respond. Do you want to discuss the funding issue?
Yes, we have consistently, for the last couple of years, and we continue to put out information regarding how we plan to finance the RO plant, even without one additional grant fund. The state revolving loan fund has dollars available, they're waiting for us to present to them after the final design, construction documents, and if we get nothing else, no other grant funds, and we have to finance the whole plant and project ourself, we plan to submit to the state revolving loan fund to finance over a long-term loan payable over, typical loan's 20 years, we can go 25 if we want. It's a very low interest rate right now, very favorable interest rate. We don't know how, what that interest rate will be when we're ready, but we will finance the whole project. We have already put out in our weekly reports that we project a 12% rate increase with no additional grant funds, we would smooth that over three to four years. We're going to confirm that rate increase with a rate consultant that we're going to be presenting that contract soon. You've already given us the go-ahead to go and get that rate consultant on board, they will confirm that 12% number. May go up, may go down, but we're in that ballpark. So we have consistently been putting that information out, we have a financing plan. The question is, with whatever additional grant funds we get, we can lower the amount we need from the state revolving loans. That is our plan.
And we currently have our lobbyist, Jerry Paul, and his team working in Tallahassee, again urging our senators and congressional leaders to help fund our RO plant. We've asked this year for $3 million, which will help us move along. We are continually working with SWIFTMUD and with the Water Authority in terms of moving the project along and obtaining funding. So it's not as though it's a static situation, we keep moving, we keep pedaling, and we're just hoping that the, again, the grant funding will come through.
And just to clarify, that 12% is only on the water portion of the utility, is that correct?
No, it's the whole.
Oh, it's on the entire, okay, okay.
We're going to have a rate study that will confirm, should we put it all on the water and sewer, should we put it more on water than less on sewer, but all that information will be coming back. That is our staff's analysis of what we think the rates would have to go up in order to finance the rest of the whole project on our own, based on the interest rate that the state revolving loan fund has. They're waiting for us to apply.
And that information, again, will be incorporated in our next year's budget as well, as we look at three or four years, and again, as we smooth it out, that will, again, be part of what we will be presenting to our residents. Okay, anything else for the good of the order? Okay, we are adjourned.